No, here. Yeah, so it was just easier for us to do it.
You know this program? No, I've never seen it.
I'm gonna make this meeting a little shorter tonight, you guys. I know. I thought it was so funny when you did that. The red one looks better, I guess. All right, it is 5:01, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Board of Finance to order. Today is Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. Regular meeting attended today by Board of Finance member Lorraine Pesky, member Christopher Anderson, member Chris Bayes, and member Jim Wright. We do not have anybody participating by Zoom this evening. So before we open the meeting, could we all please stand and pledge the flag? All right. It's nice to see a full auditorium again. So I am number one on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public for public comment.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
I heard Mr. Wright and I heard Mr. Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. I know, Carol, I think there were some comments that were submitted in writing to be written to the record. Do we want to start with those?
Sure. So the first is a letter from Chief Baldwin dated November 15th. Honorable members of the Board of Finance, it has come to my attention that there may be a shortfall within the overall city budget of approximately 500,000, which may affect operations of the police department. Year after year, I submit and present a responsible budget to the various boards of government within our city. Ultimately, the Board of Finance makes recommendations and approves the final operating budget for all departments, as you are well aware. First and foremost, this community should consider itself so very fortunate to have a group of hardworking, dedicated men and women serving them in their capacity as police officers. The Torrington Police Department is second to none, in part because of your continued support. Concerning the police department, my budget is very much underfunded as it stands, and it makes it difficult to operate and provide the services that the citizens of this community expect and deserve. My initial proposal of my budget was significantly cut to where we are now. My operating budget has remained consistently flat over the past 10 years plus, 10-plus years. The Torrington Police Department is in a difficult situation as it relates to staffing, and the result is an increase in overtime and other operating expenses. Staffing is considerably down, and ultimately, this affects the services that we provide to the citizens of our community. I am having a very difficult time in retaining and recruiting qualified individuals necessary to provide the high quality of service that this department provides. To hire people to fill the several vacancies that I have takes at least one year to complete. It is very time-consuming to hire, train, and prepare an officer to be on their own to provide police service to our city. Police departments such as mine cannot afford to delay the hiring of individuals to fill the much-needed vacancies. Unfortunately, interest in law enforcement has declined, making it more difficult to hire good, qualified individuals to fill vacancies. The competition amongst law enforcement agencies for new officers is fierce. Because of this, it is very important to continuously ensure that the hiring process be consistent and maintained without delay. Additionally, state mandates that were imposed upon police departments through the Accountability Bill, now state law, has also had a negative impact on my operating budget. In the interest of public safety and to avoid a detriment to this police department, which in effect is your police department, I respectfully request that the Board of Finance refrain from imposing any additional cuts or freezes to my budget. The attractiveness to a community is in part the safety of that community, which we as a police department work hard to provide. My operating budget has a profound impact on the community's safety and morale of my department. Additional cuts cannot be afforded. Respectfully, William Baldwin, Chief of Police.
Thank you.
The second is a memorandum dated November 16th from Ray Drew, Public Works Director, regarding the FY 21-22 budget. As I understand it, due to some foreseen reductions in the City of Torrington revenue for FY 21-22, there is a potential shortfall to cover projected expenses. I feel I must express my concerns about potential cuts to the Department of Public Works FY 21-22 budgets due to this revenue shortfall. As you are aware, as we progressed through the budget process, I was asked to make additional cuts from our original request. In order to meet that request, we reviewed all Public Works budgets and cut $2,146,330 from our budgets. The majority of these cuts were from requested capital improvement projects. I have deep concerns that if Department of Public Works is asked to make additional cuts to operating and capital budgets for FY 21-22, this will have a significant adverse impact on our ability to provide the services required and our ability to maintain the extensive infrastructure we are responsible for. I respectfully request that no additional cuts be made to the Department of Public Works budgets.
Is that it? Right. We're still open to the public for public comment to address the Board of Finance at this time? Right. Hearing none, saying none, we'll move into item number two. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to authorize $96,765.82 from Vehicle Replacement Fund for the purchase of two Ford Police Interceptors from State Contract Number 12 PSX 0194 from MHQ of Middletown, Connecticut, having been approved by the Board of Public Safety on November 4th and the City Council on November 8th, 2021. Thank you.
Second.
Heard Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Bayes. Questions on the motion? See, Emil is here by Zoom.
Emil, are these just regular patrol vehicles up for replacement?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Saying and hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda this evening is a presentation or discussion on software migration from the New World, financial software package that we've shared with the Board of Education since 2001, 2002. The Board of Education has looked into another software package that they would like to adopt. And I think I saw Sue Lebowski come in. Hi, Sue. So yeah, if you wanna, I think the microphone is live here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. We'll be brief, I promise. New World has always been difficult in terms of just dealing with it on an educational level. So when Lynn Vauver, our new business manager, came on and she had worked with a different system, the system is also under the Tyler Technologies umbrella. So Tyler Technologies has developed, New World has also developed infinite visions, and they talk to each other. They work well together. They're aligned. They're connected. And I'm just gonna have Lynn give an overview of that, and then if you have questions, we can answer those. Lynn has worked with it extensively, and so she can answer many of those for you, just in real time, real-life experience. The system is very smart. It will give you advanced analytics. Okay, you can use it. It saves time. It saves money. You can get everything you need out of it for budgeting purposes. It will encumber the payrolls. It'll encumber all the salaries, so we know exactly where we stand at any one time in the year. It allows for greater transparency because we can use the functions within it to do data analytics that we can give the Board of Finance information. We can give our board information. You can give the public information. It just, it makes it very easy to be clear and concise when it comes to all aspects of the budgeting process and spending the budget down. It assists you in planning. It helps us with state and federal reporting because we can download things from the state's website and upload them into our software so that we have better reporting. It'll help us with the teachers' retirement board reporting. It increases efficiency by, instead of people having to do data entry, we'll be able to download things directly from our our AppleTrack, which is our applicant tracking program, and just import the people right into the system, saving time, effort, duplication of effort, and a lot of money, hopefully. We'll be able to talk, the town will be able to see through a bridge exactly what our expenditures are. The departments can talk to each other, and our journal entries can be imported into yours through a match where our account numbers will match your old account numbers for ease of reconciliation. There also are towns that have adopted this and boards of ed, and they work in concert with one another. New World is not selling the product anymore, even though they will continue to offer services for New World, right, for a while. We don't know how long. So I think that we are moving on to what we feel is a much more productive and effective measure for us in education, and hopefully it will be helpful for both boards as they're trying to go through the budget process and have all of that information very much in a brief period of time rather than, oh, now we're changing things or we're adapting because of decisions to board either board that's made, and then we've had to come back. And usually, it takes a bit of time to reconcile those changes. We're hoping that this can happen in a much more quick, efficient way. And back at the Board of Ed, we're really able to talk with one another from the HR department to payroll, to the business department, to just in terms of staffing and keeping track of that staffing. If a person has two separate positions in two different locations, or if we just have a change from one school to another, our grade to another, this usually takes a long period of time, and the more changes you make, more errors that you can make. This will be all streamlined in one system. So we're very encouraged by that. On the very last page, you see some other districts and some other cities who have length arms and use this program.
Thank you. That was quick. So any questions for?
I do, but Lorraine can go first.
Lorraine, yes, Ms. Pesky.
Does, is infinite vision replacing mutus for Tyler?
It's not. Mutus is a different system, but I do believe mutus is. Mutus is part of Tyler Technologies. It's probably twice as expensive as this. It's made for very large municipalities, and it was cost prohibitive when we went looking for product.
Question actually for you, Mayor. Is there any thought of the city changing platforms since New World has not been sold anymore?
So, no, at this time, there isn't. We certainly learned about this in the last two weeks. So we really haven't investigated much, haven't had an opportunity to investigate this very deeply. New World is not being sold anymore by the Tyler Technologies. However, they are still servicing New Worlds. And the email that we received earlier today indicated that they would be supporting and serving New World for the long-term foreseeable future. We did this morning reach out, Robin, Stan Ziao, and Gina, and I, and Cheryl Lewis, who does all of the account reconciliations, did reach out to Nick Haas from Infinite Wisdom, I always want to say Infinite Wisdom, infinite visions, because the concern that we had, or the questions we had, was how seamless would the integration be with the city's system? Lynn has stated that, you know, the account numbers will be designed to match up with the old account numbers. You know, those are the kinds of questions that we want to make sure that, you know, that there's an open line of communication during integration, during implementation. Some of the other questions that we had were real-time versus something that gets uploaded or done by way of a journal entry. There were a lot of questions. Nick did not necessarily have all of the answers for us. So what we did suggest to him was, as they established a team of liaisons or project managers to work with the Board of Education, that we would also be working with that team to ensure what we need is actually being implemented. And we asked if he would be willing to come to the next Board of Finance meeting so that they can answer questions directly to the Board of Finance about the two systems.
Will the reports look the same as what we receive now? So as what they look like with New World? And will we be receiving two different reports?
If you ran the reports out of our system, you would see they look very similar. They're not exactly the same. They're very similar. They're much easier to read. They're very user-friendly compared to the reports that come out of New World.
Sure. Mr. Bayes, you had questions?
Yeah, what's the cost of the software?
First year, yeah. First year is 120, and then it goes down from there. It would be taken out of our alliance funding. That's where it's very budgeted.
Okay, annual fees associated with it?
It's about 82,000.
A yearly basis, right? Annual?
I'm sorry?
On a yearly basis, 82?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so if we're paying, how does, I guess, I'm just thinking of phrases. Let me take this off. How would that impact what we're already paying now for New World? Like, when does, like, when we're talking about implementation, when, you know, how much more money do we spend on New World until this gets established?
This is a school system, so it would be the district system. It wouldn't be the city system. It doesn't sound like the city is ready to adopt, should they adopt.
Well, yeah, I don't. Yeah.
At this point, the systems talk to each other, but it would be different. The New World cost that the city encourages would be different than the infinite visions that the district would. They're separate.
Okay.
So, am I interpreting your question to be, so right now, what we pay collectively for the one New World's financial system?
Exactly. What's, yeah.
What are we paying for that annually?
It's 43,000, and we split it two-thirds, one-third.
So we currently pay 43,000 for the license for the software system that we share with the Board of Education?
So we have 130 licenses, and that's the fee for those licenses. I have asked the question to find out if we can reduce those licenses, and I haven't been able to get an answer. The contract is for 130, whether we use them or not. The Board of Ed uses 44. We have 86. So I'm not sure if that cost would come to us, and then, or if they would keep a couple of the licenses.
Yeah, that was my question, Superintendent, is how, you know, how that costs in the meantime? Because if the city doesn't switch immediately, then there's still a New World cost on our side, and then you guys will still be paying for New World as well while implementing a new software.
I think we would have to work it out with Tyler Technologies to make sure if we are taking on a new system, we can work out a deal with them. The licenses right now are fixed, but obviously, if we only need Lynn or the accountant, or both of them to have a license, obviously, we would need 44 licenses. So I think that can come up at a future meeting. You're obviously having Nick come to the Board of Finance.
Yeah, which, yeah, which we just learned, which is great. Yeah, because I think.
With them in terms of costs and how that would pan out as we go down.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, because I'd like to see what, you know, and I know Chris Anderson's probably waiting to say this next when we talk about sharing services. I'd like to see what that, you know, what that means for us on the city side. You know, and especially not only the cost, but, you know, the integration. I know you say it's seamless, but, you know, is every part of it seamless? You know, and if you guys are switching to that system, I would like to see at least what it looks like on the city side and whether or not we should switch to that, to this, you know, utilizing the same type of system so that there's consistency throughout, you know, the city. So that's the reason for the question. So, thank you.
And I'm sure that if Nick comes, he can better explain those things.
Okay.
I know that Ally Carroll, our IT director, was looking into that and talking with Tyler Technologies as well.
Yeah.
If we have further questions in terms of IT and that activity, it can certainly come and present as well.
Yeah, so those are just things I think we need to know and understand for, you know, before making any final decisions on it.
Right. We're just in the initial phases. The board has approved this. We will be moving forward at the district, but then certainly whatever presentations you want to have in terms of Board of Finance, we're not even going to start with this year because it will take time.
Right.
So we will be living with New World throughout the rest of this year, and then probably six, in six months, in January, that type of thing.
Yeah, until it gets switched over. Okay, all right.
Are these contracts yearly, and are they fiscal year, or when do they, we know when these contracts expire, or?
Fiscal year.
Questions?
That might solve your question then. If everything goes by the fiscal year.
Right, then it.
And if they're still implementing everything, I mean, that would be the time to renegotiate the total number of licenses.
Right.
Right. So you're saying that it's more user-friendly, which is great. We want that. It's easy to read. We want that. Is that going to help you provide those monthly budget versus actual reports? So I know it's been a few months since we've seen one.
Yeah, what are you looking for?
For the longest time, every month, the Board of Ed would send us, send a copy of your monthly financials. And I'll throw it out there. I've been super busy. I might have missed them, but I don't think we've seen one since May or June.
I think it's just the transition from one business manager to another. And so, as we say, we've also been going through the transition so we can get those to you.
Sure. I appreciate that. I mean, I think most of my questions are going to be for the presentation with Nick.
Sure.
Because the overlap, the implementation, talking to each other, the journal entry mapping and the accounts. If it works, it works, you know, so. We'll see, we'll see what it looks like.
Good. Okay. All right. And when we bring Nick in for that, that presentation, do you, do you mind coming in? Just so that if there are questions that, you know, that the Board of Ed may have, or the Board of Finance may have to the board? You could be available. Okay, all right. I'm gonna warn you, it's the 21st of December. It's four days before Christmas, but I think that'll help. And as, as I said earlier, the conversation that we had with Nick this morning, he talked about your project manager, I can't remember her name, is going to be working with you starting next week.
Yes.
So we've asked that the city be somehow engaged in those conversations just so that we're on the same page when you do that, you know, the mapping for the accounts that, you know, we're on the ground floor for all of that.
Every one of our accounts is going to be retooled to be with the uniform chart of accounts.
Excellent.
There also is going to be a key that has your chart of accounts number built into it so that both will be present in every account.
Great.
So if we make a new account, we'll have to get an account number from you.
Right. Good. Excellent.
Thank you. I know that's a big project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. If there are no other questions, no other questions. Good. All right. Yeah, could you use the microphone? Boy, I can't hear anything, especially with the air thing on.
So just on the Tyler Technologies new software that we're using. So New World has not worked for the Board of Education since the start that New World was put into place. So what it's creating is we have to do massive duplications of data entry between departments. It is not an educational software system. It's a municipal system. And the amount of time that we're wasting at Central Office duplicating all the efforts, which is why we've been looking into different systems even before Lynn got here. We did check along the way to make sure that it meets all of the requirements that the city has in the audit requirements. But we are moving forward with the new system, and we're hoping that, you know, possibly other towns that we've talked to, the city uses the same system, and everybody likes it. I'm not sure if you guys got the whole packet, which lists all the towns that use it. We're happy to forward that on to you guys. And then relative to the monthly financials, they do go to the mayor. We can, if you want, we can send them to everyone. I'm not sure, or send them to Carol to forward on. But we would really love a Board of Finance representative to come to our budget meetings. So I'm just asking, requesting that again. We used to have a Board of Finance liaison years ago, and it was very effective. So we would love to have someone attend our budget meetings. Thank you.
All right. Item four is a presentation or discussion relative to the recent State Department of Education granting of the board's request. recent State Department of Education granting of the board's request under Connecticut General statutes ten dash two sixty-two K for two percent of the ECS allocation for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. This ACS, these are the ease, portion of the ECS funds that are paid to the general fund to offset the cost of the Board of Education's general budget, which was approved in June. The granting of this request has resulted in a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollar reduction in our revenue line item. I did prepare a memo for the board, just to talk a little bit about what that requo, the, the budget approval process, how we budget the approved expenditures against projected revenues. The timeline budget approval was in June sixteenth, I think it was on June twenty-first that the board instructed the superintendent to apply to the State Department of Education for the two percent direct payment of the ECS funding. On October twenty-sixth, we were notified that our ECS funding deposit had been had been affected, and that there was in fact a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollar reduction in that, that quarterly, that twenty-five percent deposit that's made customarily in October. So the problem is, we have a four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollar revenue deficit, I think those are the, that's the deficit that the city departments were speaking to in those letters that were sent earlier. What do we know? The impact of this is, you know, that it creates budget instability. It potentially can result in additional budget cuts to city departments, potential negative audit findings because of the significant change in the adapted budget and potential bond rating downgrade. These are some serious concerns. Proposals for a way to address this, just from a responsible fiscal management. I included that, at this point, I think that there's very little that I can do, but suggest that we continue to monitor our budget performance through the end of the calendar year, that would be the end of December, if necessary, and then make a monthly report back to the Board of Finance on where we are in relation to our spending, our expenditure line items. If necessary, make a suggestion that we impose hiring and/or spending freezes to ensure a balanced budget at the end of the fiscal year. But more importantly, wanting to ensure that we're better prepared for an eventual or potential continuation of this request being advanced by the board, that we adopt a policy or an ordinance that would require the Board of Education to notify the city as to its intention to exercise its option under that statute before the adoption of the budget, so the Board of Finance can plan appropriately for the loss of revenue. More or less a stopgap measure for us to take in regard to this matter, and the floor is open for questions or suggestions.
So the city as a whole still received the money, it just didn't come where we thought it was going to go and went directly to the Board of Ed?
No.
Am I reading that right?
No, no, so what happens with this two percent ECS appropriation is that it, the portion that would normally come to the general fund to offset the operating cost of the Board of Education is instead going to the Board of Education in the form of a grant, much like the Alliance District Grants. And the Board of Education then submits to the state its plan as to how to spend those additional funds. This does not get applied to their operating budget that was approved.
So we, we passed the budget expecting to receive the monies, and then it kind of went around us?
Yes.
Oh.
I have some questions for the chairwoman, if she wouldn't mind. So if you could, just give me some type of brief, it doesn't have to be long, explanation as to why we felt this was necessary.
Okay, so I will start with, and we've kind of went back and forth.
Are you comfortable pulling down your mask? I just can't.
Yes, on everyone else.
Yeah.
Okay, that's easier, thank you. So, you know, we went kind of back and forth throughout the summer regarding our budget allocation. I understand that the city did pay for some of our ESL positions out of your ARPA funds, but our general operating budget increased by ninety-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars for this year, with all of our contractual obligations coming on the other side of COVID. That was not substantial funding in order to be able to meet the needs of our students, number one. When looking at what our needs were for the upcoming school year and the availability of this two percent, as you're saying, four seventy-eight, six sixty-seven, well, given the fact that we only got ninety-five, three oh five, even if we had notified you in advance, you still would have been short over four hundred thousand dollars. I would also like to add that we have been extremely good stewards of the money that we've been allotted. Whenever we've had cost efficiencies throughout the year, we have returned money to the city of Torrington. So for fiscal year June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, we are returning three forty-six, one twenty-two, thirteen. So I was alarmed to hear that there was a consideration of cutting police and fire budgets to cover this. So we've returned to three forty-six. When I look back, I went through all of the audit reports going back to two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, not including this year, because the audit hasn't been completed, we've returned three million, two twenty-seven, oh, zero, thirty-four dollars. When I also carve out what the city is paying towards the Board of Education budget in comparison to what we're receiving in Alliance and ECS, I was surprised to see that over the same period of time, the city portion that is going into the city budget is actually higher than what's going into the Board of Education budget. So I'm happy to provide these sheets I've put together from the audit, but there is not another city or town in Connecticut that I can find where the city budget exceeds the Board of Education budget for what the city is paying. Now, we can't continue to cut staff, to cut programs, to do things to facilitate the needs of our students. We're trying to build a better system, and through these different grant avenues that we have at the moment, we're able to provide remedial supports in elementary, social worker supports, behavior tech supports, but we still have a long way to go, and COVID has only increased the needs of a lot of our students. So the Board of Education has to look out for what's in the best interest of the kids in the school system, and we feel that an allotment of ninety-five thousand dollars was not at all anything that was in the best interest of the kids in the school system. So that's why we did it.
So I, I know you bring up that ninety-five thousand dollar amounts a lot. That's not, that wasn't the total allocation that went to the Board of Education. You know, whether, where you want to put the dollars is, is different than what was allocated. In, in total, there was, with the ARPA funds, which you guys are utilizing and already subtracting, you know, and, and using dollars out of that account, it, it was over ninety-five thousand dollars that, that the school board received, you know, in, in, in funding from the taxpayers.
Chris, in all fairness, so the ARPA funding at the time that you finalized our budget, so in the budget that the city is paying, the ninety-five, three oh five, is what we received in operating. I have stated on the record for numerous years that putting these positions in grants is not the same thing as putting them in operating. So I am thrilled that we got these ESL positions. We also had a couple hundred new kids come in that have even more needs. The problem is, what do we do in a year, in two years, when the ARPA money's no longer there, and we have a half a million dollar deficit in the operating budget for required positions?
And I hear you on that, and, but, a- at the end of the day, that is this jobs board to find out where we end up getting that money from. Whether this board decides to utilize more taxpayer dollars, or raise the mill rate, or whatever the case may be, that's, you know, that, that's for this board, you know, to figure out. You know, our, our duty is to provide you with, with tax, the city's taxpayer dollars, right? And, you know, if we have an opportunity like we do with ARPA to fill that gap while maintaining a, a budget, then, you know, that's a tool that we have our, at, at our disposal to use. If you come to us in three years and say, it's not an option, we need to continue with these, excuse me, ESL positions, then that's something that all of us are going to have to look at each other and say, listen, the Board of Ed needs these positions, we need to fill them. You know, so I, I understand where you're coming from, I just, this creates a large hole in, in, you know, for revenue for us, and we have to now find a way to, you know, fill that almost half a million dollar hole, that's not easy. You know, the, 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 the street department is, is, has a winter season coming up, police and fire are, are, we know, a- as we saw, these letters are, are struggling. It, but it just puts us, I just need, you know, at least you understand that it puts us in a tough position to fill this almost half a million dollar hole in our revenue.
I have a couple of comments to make to that. I wish that we did budgeting based on needs, and we actually looked at what the needs of the school system were when determining what our budgets would be. But every year that I've sat here, both on the Board of Education and as the Board Chair, how we arrive at what we're allotting for budgets is how we back in to not impact the mill rate, and that's within your purview what to do. So I wish I could be confident to say in two years, this Board of Finance was going to say, we understand you need these ESL positions, and we're going to fund them. But that's not what's going to happen. What's going to happen is, this is the number you're getting, and we're going to have to make it work. And you can only make these things work for so long. So I would disagree with that. If we started to look at needs-based budgets and balancing it out to the mill rate, I would agree.
Right, and.
And if you're saying about this deficit, we just returned three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to you. Do you know, we, we could have expended that money, which is what used to happen. We have never expended money, if we had a savings in special education, we returned it to the city. We've always done what we're supposed to do, we've never just spent down the money. So, yes, you have a shortfall of a hundred thousand dollars, but we have a lot of things we're not running, because we have class sizes that are too large, because our budget doesn't account for our needs.
Yeah, here's, here's the thing though Fiona, that allocation with, including that ARPA.
Don't include the ARPA, Chris, because it's not what the Torrington taxpayers are paying for.
It did fulfill your budget request.
It did not.
The one point two six percent with the ARPA, and with the additional four hundred, and I have to find the, the figure, that completed your one point two six percent budget increase request.
No, we had, we moved things into ARPA as well, as well as moving the windows into our ARPA funding.
Right, but I, I'm talking the total that we consider for operating was four hundred and some odd thousand, which you, you know, you said three hundred and some odd thousand covered your, you know, your contractual obligations, and then ninety-five thousand dollars.
I don't know where you guys are getting that number, and I would, this probably isn't the meeting for this, but I would love to have a joint meeting to go through these numbers again, so we can really look at this, because we do not agree, and I'm pulling all of my information right off the city website, so we don't agree with the numbers. We can move the shelves all we want, but at the end of the day, our operating increase was ninety-five, three oh five.
All right, and I'll, I'll do a point of clarification on that. The operating budget increase was four hundred thousand dollars. The capital was reduced by three hundred and four thousand, so you're talking in net, the difference between the operating and the capital, which is the ninety-five you keep falling on. And I know that there's always some confusion about an MBR, what is your MBR calculated on? Your MBR is on your operating expenses, not your capital, capital's not included in a, a calculation for MBR. So, so I would like to clarify, the operating budget was increased by four hundred thousand dollars. Capital was zeroed out, resulting in a three hundred and four thousand dollar reduction. And then the five sixty-nine, two eighty-one fulfilled the Board of Ed's request for nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars. And you're right, I think that's another conversation for another day. But I also want to make another point of clarification. With the budget surplus that you are returning to the general fund, that ends with the fiscal year, that is not three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars that we can roll over and utilize to offset the twenty-one, twenty-two year expenses. So those surpluses end up in fund balance. This fiscal year budget, we cannot use those funds that have been retired or closed out and end up in the fund balance.
But every year, we've utilized money, not the Board of Ed from the fund.
We have, and that's part of the budget adoption process. So as I indicated earlier, when we were setting the stage for the conversation, the combined spending plans that were approved were one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred forty-eight, one hundred thirty-five million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred eight dollars. Those spending plans were approved based on revenues projected to be one thirty-five, six forty-eight, nine oh eight. Three million, one hundred thousand came out of fund balance, and that was approved as part of the budget adoption, approval, adoption. So we can't then say, oh, we need another three hundred and forty thousand, or we need another four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Those decisions were made on that date and that point in time, and we cannot dip into that fund balance again until the next budget cycle, when a decision is made. Does it, number one, comply with the policy that was adopted by the Board of Finance as to where we should land with a percentage of the total operating expenses? And through a, a budget adoption process. So I, I, I respect the fact that you have returned funds. Four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars was also granted to the Board of Education to be moved into a capital reserve for some of the projects that you're working in, capital projects. You know, it certainly would have made sense if the Board of Education came back to the Board of Finance and said, we'd also like to take this three hundred and forty thousand dollars of surplus and move it into capital reserve. Would have avoided this four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar hole in the revenue, or at least gotten you closer to, you know, what you needed that four seventy-eight for. But I think that's, that's just a little bit of a disconnect in understanding how those year-end surpluses have to be handled, and this is all done in accordance with, say, GAAP accounting requirements. So we don't, we don't have the latitude to go into that fund balance to make up this money, is what I'm essentially saying.
It's not like just the savings account.
It is.
It operates similar in some ways, but it's not.
Yeah.
I, I think the surprise is what got me. This, this decision was just made last month?
No, no, it was made a week after the budgets were adopted. So June sixteenth is when the budgets were adopted, and then June twenty-first, at a Board of Education meeting, the Board of Education instructed the superintendent that they wished to apply for that two percent. Um, the Board of Education um, instructed the Superintendent that they wished to apply for that two percent.
Chris, if I can say something to make it.
Can I ask a question?
Make this work together.
Yes.
On. Can I say something first?
I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question.
Not Mondays, not numbers. On June sixteenth, when we say here's the Board of Finance. Remember Mr. Bushka, your budget was presented. Remember Mr. Bushka specifically, and I believe Mr. Bayes, both asked. Mr. Aaron and Superintendent Lebowski, is this everything you want? Does this fulfill your budget needs? That's what I'm looking at as I'm looking at the bottom line. And they've both said yes.
Well, they said that.
So what happened?
They said the minimum, they said it means the minimum, did it? The request was much higher. It meant the minimum of the minimum is what it meant.
But if you had a problem on June sixteenth, why didn't we hear about it on June sixteen?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, for four years I've been on the board, I'm with the Budget Committee. Can I just answer your question?
You're not answering my question.
I'm going to right now.
I wanna know why Mr. Aaron and Mrs. Bowski, Superintendent Lebowski.
I'll tell you why.
Said, okay, on a specific day that that budget was okay. Cuz I'm sitting here as a Board of Finance member.
Let me tell you. I'll tell you.
I.
Because if you would come to our meetings, any of you, Chris, you came to one. Four years I've been on the board and four years I was told we're not transparent enough. Chris, you've told me this before, you don't provide us the information you need, but you get. It's on our, it's on our, and I'm not criticizing anybody, but you get all the information. Come to the meetings, especially during COVID.
You're not answering my question.
I am gonna finish, but, well, the answer is, we got the, we didn't get, if you came to our meetings, you would have known what our request really wasn't what we needed. But nobody came. You gave us ninety five thousand.
Can we back it up just a second? Is, is the Superintendent's?
Shared sacrifices.
And the fine, and, and Mr. Aaron, are they presenting the budget versus the Board of Education superseding them? I don't understand this.
It's the Board of Education's budget.
Superintendent Lebowski and Mrs. LeBarre, uh, uh, Aaron said, this is okay. There was, we were concerned, I sit here concerned about education, I spend my life in education. I want nothing but more than the work for the children of Torrington. And when I hear from them that this is okay, that we worked on something, the last minute, come. The uh, to what the mayor was trying to do, we worked with the numbers, we gave you your numbers. They sat there, we tried to get it going and they said, yes, this is fine. Two people on the board asked.
And I, I hear Mr. Uclito saying. You're, you're saying, you're saying that the board's request was higher, but the request, Mr. Uclito, that came here was one point two six percent. It's in the presentation. The numbers are there and I understand that, you know, the board's initial request was higher and maybe the superintendents, but we have to understand.
Thousand divided by the total.
Right, so, but what, what, what Mr. Wright is saying, and I, and I totally understand, is, is that. The, the increase that came to us was the one point two six percent and the nine hundred and some odd thousand. We came to, to find a way to help it, to make that work and to ensure that you had the funding. In both the four hundred and some odd thousand, the five hundred and some odd thousand in, in the ARPA. We, we, we made, we tried to make that request whole, you know, that, that one point two pers- uh, two point six percent.
I can answer that. So. At the meetings leading up to that meeting. It was that there was no money from the city and that everyone was gonna have to make shared sacrifices. What shared sacrifices could we make? We came to the table with what our bare minimum would be. And what happens? The Board of Finance approves a budget, where all of a sudden you have a lot of money for the city side. But the Board of Ed is the only one making the sacrifices.
Wait, 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 wait.
What happens on the city side is not. What is relevant to what happens to you, I'm again repeating.
But it is.
We had a budget that was presented to us. We asked, is this what you want? And they said, yes.
You're wrong.
You weren't satisfied, what the, I don't know what the city side has to do with it. Your budget stands on its own, I don't know what it has to do with the city, I don't know why.
But you're saying things that aren't true, you keep cutting me off. What you're saying is wrong, that's not what we needed, it's in the record, it was submitted, we went with one point six, we met with you folks. We said, this is the minimum, you came back with less. But the point is, the budget process is such, cuz I was an accountant myself. Is you look at the entirety of the picture, you made a choice and I'm not criticizing you for it, but you gave police, fire and everybody else. Five to seven percent increases, I don't even know what they were, what was the average?
You, you can't correlate, a, a five percent increase in a police department, seven, you know, budget to seventy six, you know this, we've done this many times.
You planned for the worst.
I'm all set.
You don't like the answer, Chris.
Do I hear a point of order?
We can move to some other board members.
So, I mean, just, and I think we all should be, we should be having more joint meetings along the way so that by the time we get to budget, we know. But, so the one last comment I wanna make, cuz I think arguing back and forth isn't gonna do anything. But when I looked at the agenda tonight. Our net increase is less than the purchase of the two vehicles tonight. So that is the reason why.
I'm gonna clarify that, no.
No, I'm just saying.
The increase was four hundred thousand dollars to your operating budget. And you received five hundred and sixty nine thousand of the city's municipal ARPA funds. You, the Board of Education came to the city with a nine hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred eighty one dollar request. And that request was fulfilled through those two funding mechanisms. The, the capital portion was zeroed out, but the proposal was, we will get you that roof money. And in your five year capital plan, we will also find a way to get you the Volvo Wetmore roof money. And we've done that.
And, and it should also be known that every time you've come to this board after a budget season, like for example, last year. To move that uh, money back to capital reserve. There, there hasn't been a time when we've opposed anything you've asked for, those budget. I, 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 I went back and started looking, you know, all the times you've come to us and asked us for different allocations or to move money here or there. We've given them to you, have we not? Can you think of one we haven't given to you?
Well, you've asked, you've allowed us to move our own money, which I'm extremely grateful for.
Ms. Pesky, I'm sorry, Ms. Pesky ahead.
Can we consider net budgeting for the next couple of years? Can we look at, I mean, this is such a messed up process.
I'm sorry, Ms. Pesky has a floor.
Mayor, can you, do you have any?
Can't hear you.
Excuse me, do you have any idea of the legislative history of this statute? What, what's the, what is the point of it and how did it come about? And does it have within it any parameters in terms of the timing of the requests?
It's uh, it does. Uh, so the purpose of the statute was, um, and I think it was actually created pre-alliance district uh, designations. Um, this statute was designed to afford Boards of Education an opportunity to apply to the state. For a direct payment of the uh, general fund portion of ECS funding. To develop programs that would address uh, a um, uh, test score just uh, disparities. Um, and indeed those test scores, mastery test scores. Uh, it's tied to a, if you're um, twenty percent uh, below the state's uh, uh, goal. That this would be an opportunity for boards to go to the state. Um, present a proposal as to how to spend the money to develop those educational programs. That will improve those mastery test scores. It is essentially the same thing as the Alliance District, that is exactly what Alliance District does. So I, I don't mind saying, I was a little surprised that the state approved the request because. As an Alliance District that the Board of Education is currently receiving for three point nine million dollars, almost four million dollars. Um, to address those uh, test scores, uh, test score uh, disparities. Um, but uh, they did it in accordance with the statute, they submitted the request. Uh, as it was directed, they notified my office, which I in turn forwarded to each of you uh, at the end of June. Um, and really, we didn't hear anything more, I'm assuming the board hadn't heard anything more until very recently. When uh, we were made aware that the ECS uh, deposit to the city was missing four hundred and seventy eight thousand.
Maybe I underestimated what that message meant back in June.
Oh.
Um, are there any other open statutes, applications or opportunities for a second change? That we didn't know about when we were making the original budget?
I don't think so.
Is there another two percent available that can be carved out somewhere?
For the board? No, I, no.
I'll say, if you came to some of the budget meetings and some of the discussions were, were public, it was, Chris, you know, for four years, you've told me to be transparent.
In the interest of not being argumentative about this.
I'm trying not to, I'm trying to give, I'm trying to give you comments where we can actually work together. And it seems like everything I talk about, which will solve all these problems, nobody wants to consider. This whole two percent thing was discussed publicly. If somebody came from your, Chris, stop shaking your head, no.
We're not saying it's not transparent, we're not, nobody's, nobody said it's not transparent.
My point is, it would have been resolved if we could have some sort of joint discussions, some sort of joint. You, you're, you're an executive committee that at the end of the year tries to catch up to what our budget numbers are. And, and this is education, which changes every single day. All of these things we're talking about are discussed daily and weekly. They're discussed every day, I'm suggesting if you read the minutes. Or come to the meetings and listen and ask the questions.
Nobody suggested that.
But you don't do it, so now we know we are here.
I'm sorry.
What I would like to see is, yes, Mayor, to the point in your memo, you had mentioned um, a request, a policy, however we wanna phrase it. If we're going to set whatever budget we set in June. And there is a communication or an email or a planning thing that we need to take into consideration when we set the budget in June. I think it's important for us to have all the facts and options. If we come to this point next year. I will need to know, speaking selfishly just for me. I will need to know whether or not there's an intent to adjust the budget set that we set by one percent, two percent, five percent. If there's a change that could happen or will happen, I would like to plan for that when we set the budget. That would be.
So that would be the policy that, that in my proposal, I'm suggesting that there be a policy or an ordinance. So that that communication would come from the Board of Education before the budget is adopted. I, I wanna be clear, the communication about this two percent. Uh, the request to the State Department of Education for this two percent came after the budget was adapted.
And, and I think that's, that's why I'm asking for what I'm asking.
Okay.
You've known me long enough to know that I'm allergic to surprises. So it, I, it's a, it's a terrible, terrible thing. So if everything was statutory and above board and communicated, that's fine. No one's denying anybody anything and if it's all above board, it's all above board. I would just like to be able to plan for this. If it's going to happen and if it's going to happen after the budget was set, well, then we need to set the budget expecting a change to come.
I have one last question for the Chairwoman, if I could. The split spending plan that you did send to the state with that request was, was it rejected? Is that true?
We've been working with them on what's allowable and what's not allowable. So I think you guys got a copy of the most recent one.
Yeah, I think so.
With the registered behavioral therapists, the coaches, the intervention, social worker and instruments for elementary.
Yeah, do, do you think?
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, do you think it was the quarter of a million for walkie talkies that maybe? Is, is, so is this one the updated one or is this the initial request?
Is this the one?
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, it's, it's four seventy eight.
I think this is the initial request that was um, attached, I don't, I don't think I saw the.
They would not approve.
Okay.
Uh, we were trying to get those for security issue or.
Okay.
Get those in place.
Okay, so, so they rejected this one and do you have a, an idea of what's gonna replace that quarter of a million dollars? Okay, yeah, if you have that, be great. Cuz the one we have is just the one that was rejected. Yeah, I can pass it to them.
Mr. Anderson, you're a hundred percent right, we could, we could fix this process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we doing more than?
Yes.
But, but there's not really a, a vote to be had, is that?
No, this is, no, this is just a discussion.
So just a point of clarification on this, so just that, you know what you're looking at. So this is actually based, when we talked with the state on Title One funding, not Alliance funding. So it's very similar to that in terms of any type of need. So it could be parent communication, it could be SEL, it could be academics. So what you're seeing in front of you is a key need for COVID expenses. Because we have so many social emotional needs of our students. So registered behavior technicians, uh, literacy coaches and interventionists. Social worker at the high school, instruments for our elementary, which is really providing equity for our students. Because they don't have funding in terms of purchasing loaners. So it really levels the playing field for our students. So you're seeing a definitely a new budget. We will look into other ways to fund those walkie talkies, they're still essential in terms of our communication. Communication with the police department, communication throughout our schools. But just a point of clarification in terms of how these um, funds get used and allocated. Because our original submission was rejected and um, this is the first time we've done it and we needed that clarification. So as the process went on, we learned more and this became um, a preliminary approved by the state.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure. All right, so then if it doesn't require um, an action um, or a motion, um, but the um. The uh, proposal for the adoption of a policy or an ordinance. Uh, if it's going to be an ordinance, it would uh, be a recommendation that goes to council. Um, and uh, I'm inclined to think that we could work with the Board of Education to find what's an appropriate deadline for them to notify us of their intention. Um, certainly the budgets are delivered to the Board of Finance by April fifteenth. Um, I would think that that would be an appropriate timeline to notify the board of their intentions. Uh, if they were in, inclined to do this again.
Sounds reasonable, so we'll, we'll work on that in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Anderson, also everybody, our meetings are.
Point of order.
Okay.
I'm moving into the next agenda.
I just wanted to say our meetings are on computer, are on.
Thank you.
The computer, so you can listen.
Appreciate it.
Well, it doesn't seem like anybody appreciates what I say tonight, point of order, everybody.
A little waste of time.
All right, we're moving into item five. Uh, and I, you know, I didn't, I didn't know what to do with this um, uh, agenda item. Um, Carol put this on, so I, I'd be looking for uh, the Board of Education. Perhaps to open the discussion, open this motion for discussion purposes. Um, so uh, I'm looking for a, a motion. To approve or deny the Board of Education Building Committee request. For a waiver of the building permit fees due to the city in connection with the construction of the Torrington High School and Middle School.
One more discussion.
You will need approval, yeah. Okay, so I'm hearing a motion to approve the Board of Education uh, Building Committee request. Um, motion made by Ms. Pesky, is there a second?
Are you allowed a second for discussion?
For discussion? Is the motion wasn't made for discussion, will you make that for discussion?
I'll make it for discussion.
Thank you, okay, so the motion is for discussion purposes to approve uh, made by uh, Ms. Pesky. Second by Mr. Anderson, okay. All right. Building Committee, Mr. Aaron.
Yes, you know Mario. Uh, we met a couple of times with the, the mayor and Park and Rec and Building Department. Uh, just to let you know the background, I've been on five projects with the city. And the city has never charged us for building permits. That was when I was co-chair of the uh, Southwest Building Project. When Mario and I were co-chairs of the Athletic Field Project. When we did the uh, flat roof at the middle school. When we did the elevator at the high school and we did the ADA uh, changes at the high school. What we decided and what we thought was a prudent uh, permit fee was uh, to. Permit fee of three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to the city. And the balance would go back into the uh. The building projects contingencies. We also have on the uh, in the budget, an additional eighty thousand dollars for town staff costs. So we talked about this, that if the Building Department has a part-time person or whatever to go to the project when it's being built. The uh, budget would pay eighty thousand dollars for that person for the town, the city. We also have in, contained in the budget, eighty thousand dollars for an independent code review. So that the city does not have to have their person do that also. And we also, lastly, we have seventy five thousand dollars in the, in the budget for independent structural review. So the city doesn't have to have a structural person, we will take care of that. So those are the items, three hundred and sixty five thousand. We talked about the, and, and there was an agreement with Park and Rec and Building Department. For the building fee, eighty thousand dollars, which is in our budget for the town staff cost. Eighty thousand dollars for independent code review and seventy five thousand dollars for independent structure.
So, and just to elaborate on the three hundred and sixty five thousand. So, and just to elaborate on the three hundred and sixty-five thousand. I did prepare a memo that went to the Board of Finance, so. A couple of points, the construction project, which is moving along remarkably well. Through the development phase and design phase, it's site development. So two things of note, this is the largest public school construction project in the state of Connecticut. Is that ever or is that just currently?
Current.
Current, okay. So due to the size and scope of the project that the Board of Education is proposing to cover the cost of the independent code review and structural reviews. And Aaron, could you clarify when you say code review, structural review, you're talking about plan? Is that the planned reviews that you're talking about, not inspections?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in the budget, we do have inspections with concrete and steel and all of that.
Right. So the, the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that Mr. Aram is referring to. That was discussed with Park and Rec and our building official is directly tied to the relocation of the skate park. The, the confines of the site for this project. They quickly identified the need for additional parking and accessing the parking that is currently located within the. At least best pond, at least best park property. Became critical to their being able to meet those parking requirements for a school project this size. That requires a relocation of that skate park, which was constructed utilizing at least best trust funds. So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to circumvent. The involvement of the Attorney General's Office, who has oversight of gifts to municipalities and trusts that benefit the local municipalities. Those are called site pray proceedings or site pray doctrine. So, so the proposal is, and thank you, Mario, for sending this email, and I think you all have a copy of the email. The approach, the proposal was to waive. The original, total original permit fee was one million, five eighty-nine, eight forty-one. Minus the three sixty-five. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I should have done this math in advance. Three hundred and sixty-five. What do you have? So one million, two twenty-four, eight forty-one. So the, the request is to waive one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars.
With the understanding that they're offering to include all these other outside costs.
Those outside costs are, yes, because of the scope of this project, you know, it's customary in those school construction projects. To cover those costs, large scale projects, Keystone, when that was. Being developed and going through all of the review process, third-party review costs are customarily paid for. By the contractor or by the, the developer. So.
I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I have a question. Yeah, sorry.
I didn't understand that last, the developer to. Who, who, these, these fees, the eight, like eighty thousand dollars, that comes, which traditionally do that in a construction project?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
First of all, where's, where did this, the eighty, like eighty thousand dollars, is that?
It's in, it's in the, the budget, which is a hundred fifty-nine million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But where did the number of eighty thousand dollars come from? Is that a kind of a standard thing?
That's the usual fee that the architect and the ONG and the construction manager, when we met with the budget, put it together.
Well, based on square footage.
Yeah, okay, it's based on square footage. Could the cost exceed that or be less than that, or it's just kind of a standard thing?
It's, it's a square footage and that's what it's standard.
But there's a substantial soft cost contingency. It's considered a soft cost. It would, it would come out of the soft cost contingency, but it's a reasonable number.
Okay, but does the, typically the construction company would absorb that?
No, it would not.
No, they're, they, they're not allowed to pay for a third-party inspection. It, the inspection is to war, is to certify their work, whether it be the steel, whether it be the concrete, may concrete mix, it's the pavement. You know, it, it's all of that.
Same thing with commissioning. If we don't have the architect who is on commissioning, we had a separate. So independence.
I have a question. So obviously I've been supportive of this project so far. My only concern right now with, you know, the possibility of tabling this or any residual opposition, I, what is the exact plan with the skate park? Because I've heard some concern, you know, knowing that we have to move this, that I know some of the kids who raised the money, yeah, like seventy, eighty thousand dollars to help build the skate park. Plus the, you know, trust funds that were used. I think I'd like to see an exact definitive plan. You may have one, you may say, here it is. But, you know, without a plan for where that's going to go and, and a timeline of when that's going to be completed. That falling to Park and Rec?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
Yep.
So, but, but.
I know there was.
We don't know where it's coming?
We don't.
Yeah, that's.
There was some discussion about it potentially being moved to a school property, but that really hasn't been revisited yet. Could you, I'm sorry Fiona, could you come to the microphone?
Yeah.
Masks.
The location of that skate park at the high school has been a tremendous problem for us for several years. So we would strongly request that it not be on school.
Which is fine, I just need to, I, I, I don't feel comfortable, like I said, either, either tabling this or, or whatever. But I, I'd like to see a, a plan for that skate park before, you know, because if, if we go forward with this and, you know. And, you know, they start and they tear down the skate park and there's no skate park and, you know, we're a year later saying, okay, well, maybe now we'll choose the location for the skate park. Or we don't know where it's going to go, or we don't know who's gonna, you know, I, I think I, I would just really like to, to know a definitive plan on, on that specific element of this. Right, yeah, no, I understand the money's going to be allocated here. Right, and I, I understand that point, but you just have to understand where we come from, you know, we're going to get the questions of, you guys approved this, they took out our skate park, what now? You know.
Cost or the skate park?
What's that?
You're talking about the building permit or the skate park? What, what's this discussion?
I'm talking about the. Right, exactly. Part of this, this, this permit is graciously, you're offering to, to reallocate those, you know, to use those funds at three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and take it out of what we're going to potentially waive for your building fees. You know, that's, that's a good chunk of that money. And, and I think, like I said, I, it's concerns I've heard, so it's a concern that I'm going to voice, you know, to you guys. And, you know, I'd like to see a plan for, for what's going to happen with that. It doesn't have to be set in stone completely, but I, you know, I'd like to have some kind of idea of what the, what's going to happen, when, when it's going to happen. So when I go back to the public and say, oh, don't worry, the Board of Ed has a plan, they, they're going to move it here, they're going to have a skate park for you by next summer, you know. Whatever the case may be, or whatever, yeah, whatever, it doesn't have to be specifically that, but I, I just, like I said, I'd like to know.
Right. Well, more than that, we need it for, I mean, we're talking about not having a decision on the skate park until they've had time to review it. We're.
So we're just looking, so we're trying to value engineer a hundred and fifty-nine million dollar project, right? So we're literally looking at every square inch of space that we have, what can we cut, what can we add, what do we need? So we need to know where that money is going, right? So we need to know, are we going to be paying the permit fees? Are you guys in agreement with us paying to move the skate park? But that's where our involvement in the skate park ends, because we don't have anything to do with the skate park, it has nothing to do with the schools. So Park and Rec, I'm sure, I don't know, behind the armory, maybe, I don't know, but that's going to be their wheelhouse, not ours. So this is really just the financial component of it. But I don't know about the other piece of it.
Yeah, is, is that Attorney General's Office?
So again, just so that everybody is on the same page, because the skate park. Is located on, excuse me. Because it is located on Elise Best's park property, which was gifted to the city. And falls under the purview of the Attorney General's Office. And the skate park was constructed utilizing trust funds. Any change to that gift or those gifted funds would require the Attorney General's Office. Input this, we actually had this conversation earlier in the year with the Building Committee Chairman. When the request was to have the entire parking lot turned over to the Board of Education. So in order to avoid that, you know, the Attorney General would always be looking for that site price, I pray being French for as close to, you know, or like kind. So that's where the sum of money Brett Simmons did a little research, what would it cost to relocate this park? Build a new slab so that it can, the kids can have the exact same amenity. And that's where the three hundred and sixty-five thousand came from. The area to which it would be relocated has not been further discussed. And that three sixty-five was a ballpark number. When I said a school property was mentioned, it wasn't the high school, middle school property. We understand that you're shoehorned into that property already. So that is just a clarification on why the three sixty-five is being held in the building permit. For that satisfaction of the site pray doctrine.
Just one thing, Mayor, for future reference on the location near a school.
Yes.
It's not policed. I grabbed a kid a couple of months, about a month ago with a fake AR-15, you know, hanging out at the park, heading toward the high school. Now, I wouldn't suggest you put it anyplace other than where it's policed, because the kid smoked pot all day. It's not.
That was part of the discussion. Visible to the police department.
Right.
Yeah.
And they say the same thing.
So. Other questions or comments?
I just have one comment. I find this extremely ironic. I know that this is the building committee and I don't mean to throw this at you guys. But we were presented here with a comment that we need a budget that we need to plan ahead. We had a budget, we planned ahead and then almost half a million dollars was taken out of it. Now you're coming to us and saying you need the predictability of a, a budget. I find this extremely ironic.
I don't know what you mean by the predictability of this budget. This was discussed months ago. If somebody, it was discussed.
Our budget, as I said, we approved the budget and then at the last minute, then we come today and we find. Of almost half a million dollars that we thought we hadn't, and the fund is taken away, the, the Board of Education applied to the state and got that. I understand Mario, I'm just saying this ironic, I'm not saying you're not entitled to it. I'm not saying I'm not going to do it, I'm just saying it's ironic, Mario, that's all.
It's not even something you should be charging. We're getting third-party inspectors, our, our building officials, I do fifty projects a year, do not sign off on the structural integrity of a project or the, or the pavement. It's the third-party inspectors, they just show up and John does a great job, he shows up and he talks to the superintendent and he gets a projection as to where they're going. To charge, to even think about that being something that the, the, anybody in the city should be charged for, i- it's a wash, you're taking it from the. You're taking it from the, the bond funding and putting it over to the city side of, and into the Building Department. Which that will fund the Building Department for seven years, but I'm not sure why you would want to take from the kids and put it to the city fund. I mean, we're here because it was budgeted, but in most communities, they don't budget for this.
So and to that point, part of the recommendation in the memo that I prepared was that we really should have, again, a policy or an ordinance. When it comes to municipal projects and permit fees, we don't, there's nothing in writing, there's past practice. But.
And the precedent they cited supports that as well? With Southwest, the athletic field, the roof?
Yes, it would, it does.
How comfortable are we with the three sixty-five? Well, we've got two pages, one says three seventy-five, one says three sixty-five, that's pretty.
It is three sixty-five, I, I.
You're allowed to round a little. Understanding that the size yet to be determined and won't be determined.
Right.
For a while.
Right.
Are we comfortable with that number? Should it be higher? I mean, what if, what if the size that's ultimately chosen? Isn't ideal and it costs four sixty-five? I don't want to take this thing away from the kids that enjoy it and have to find another hundred thousand.
This number, sorry. This number increased because when we met with Park and Rec, they, they said two hundred and seventy thousand, remember three hundred thousand. We said, we will up it just in case with contingency to three hundred and sixty-five thousand. They gave us the number of two seventy. Park and Rec Chair and Department. We said, let's, there's always contingency, right, with something else, we came up with three sixty-five to cover it.
That whole thing, hating surprises. That's the whole thing with hating surprises, yes, that's exactly what I'm thinking, yes.
If it would be helpful to have. Brett Simmons come before the board with a firm plan on where it will be relocated and the cost. Because I think it's less about the removal of the existing equipment at that park. And more about what needs to be constructed for it to be relocated. So it's that slab. And I would agree, where is it going to be relocated?
It presumes that it's going to be on something that we already own.
It would presume, however, all of the city parks, keep in mind that was constructed. In a walkable location for kids. And I would agree with Fiona, I, I think I was one of the Board of Ed members at the time that objected to it being over at that school. But the local parks do not pose adequate space for it. But if you wish, we can have Brett Simmons, and this will give me an opportunity to circle back with Mr. Arrow and Mr. Longabuco to talk further about. Some of the other locations that we discussed and get you better costs, in which case you can make an informed decision on this.
I would love that. And since we're, we're.
But don't they need to know?
I'm hearing, yeah. Right.
For the sake of expediency and maybe getting this result, can we put a little more contingency in there? I know I'm, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a, a way to satisfy Mr. Anderson, you know, I mean.
Well, gentlemen, how much does it, how, how much does it, does it disrupt your project timeline if we tabled this to December? You know, you know, just like, you know, without, without this, can you not move forward with anything else? That's. Yeah, as has every building material.
We are literally pitching a steel instead every single penny, right down to a green closet. So we need to know.
We need those brooms.
Yeah, we need to know, you know, what our contingency is and obviously the balance of this permit fee will go into the contingency. We cut the contingency from, I think, seven, or four, five, I mean, we, believe me, when we say we turn over every single rack we can.
For the sake of compromise, though, can we add, if we had fifty thou, I mean, if, if we had fifty thousand, it comes to four fifteen, I think. It's a lot of money to build, to move that skate park. I mean, is that a reasonable compromise? Because you, you, you'll have. You'll have plenty of money.
Because we're going to be starting construction. The first thing they're going to do is we need to place trailers and trailers to be best where the.
It's a staging area.
Staging there.
Past practice has been to. Waive the, the fee, the city fee.
And, and again, if it weren't for the fact that there were trust funds and there's trust property involved. I don't think the three seventy-five would be a discussion today. So. So that's, I'm just putting that out there is how we came to these numbers.
Is there available to increase the number while we turn some of it back?
I, I was thinking the same thing. Like, if, if, if everybody's comfortable just saying, hey, whatever it costs, we'll get it done. And then whatever it doesn't cost goes right back into the building.
Well, we need the number. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Whatever it costs to a certain amount.
Well, yes, yes, yes. Right, 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 right. I hear you. And I don't think anyone's.
And I, I don't, I don't, we don't need fifty thousand extra dollars. I don't, I don't.
No, I was using that as contingency.
I, I, I understand the trying to negotiate.
No, I meant that as a further contingency because Mr. Anderson wasn't certain if there was any contingency in there or not. So that's, it would serve as contingency, but we can get this done for the price, Mario.
But the.
Yes.
The waiving of the fees is something that has been done. And so I, I would like for us to do that again. It's, it's a bit more complicated because of the skate park. But I don't want to muddy the waters with that so that this process, which I've been a part of previously and is, is very stressful, trying to get that number down that, out of the, the size of this project for us to be talking about this amount of money, I think, I think it's reasonable to, to waive the fees.
And, and I appreciate that you keep referring to the skate park. I think just to keep it all in context, can we kindly refer to it as the trust assets? The only reason we're having this conversation is because it's a trust asset. So, so that's, that's the only thing I'm saying. It's, is, I don't know, I think there's a reporter on the line. I, I don't want the headlines to be that this became about a skate park. This is a trust asset and we're trying to do our best to correct, exactly, to honor the intent of the gift.
That's returning to a much bigger legal battle.
Right. If we don't do it. Exactly. Yeah.
We can put that on the budget too, instead of permit, trust asset.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, sometimes it's all in how you phrase it. But yeah, I mean, and, and is, whatever we decide today or whatever, what are the next steps? I mean, do you have to submit this to the Attorney General and see if they sign off?
No, I, I, I would certainly notify the Attorney General that this has taken place, but that the site price doctrine was the value of that trust asset was, you know, was identified and protected through this process. And I would include these minutes of this meeting, and if it's noted on their expenditures memo line item, then I think we're covered.
Is, is there more of the trust property over by the pond that's being affected too? Is that being affected?
There was a sliver of a piece of land that was a landslide.
It's a land, it's a landslide. Right, so you can, when we put up the three K playground, everybody can use it. It's in a separate location. So there was a very small landslide.
And the trust approved that as well or will approve that as well, I assume?
Marty Connor, planning zone, he said, they're getting, they must have the drawings now and he can approve. It's just the same amount that we're taking, we're giving.
We took some, Jim, right around the fence part area.
Yeah.
We gave some back over near the, no, over near the skate park.
Excellent.
And I would even say that that would also go to the council. I know that Marty can do that on the land use side, but because it's a trust asset, we'll also bring that back to the council. But it is, it's, as I understand it, even landslide.
Well, it feels like I'm going to need to amend my motion. But it also feels like there should be a number in, in that motion.
I was, I was just gonna ask if we could just clarify what we're voting on, like, rephrase it or re-read it.
That we would waive one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars in permit fees? Is that, that was the subtraction of the three hundred and sixty-five.
Let me just do the math on that one more time. Is everybody, everybody has their calculator out?
It's three sixty-five, right? Not three seventy-five?
Yeah, that's what she's saying.
And you want to stay with the three sixty-five and not put in the contingency?
I mean, you said you can get it done, right?
It can be, yeah. My suggestion to make it easy, and they're gonna probably get mad at me, was just waive the fee and make it the responsibility of us, if you can legally, to move the park, but maybe you can't do that. Maybe you can't.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and we did talk about that in that meeting. And this was the recommendation that Mr. Arum came forward with, is do this in this way. I think it has a lot to do with your budgeting and accounting to the state on the grant.
Yeah. Well, that's true.
Correct. Right.
That's true. You're right. That was the reason.
Yeah.
But yes, it can be.
Why don't we say?
Did she make a motion? I don't know. I would, if we don't use it, get a.
We don't have a contingency in our budget anyways.
That is, it is a contingency, right? Two conversations with Brett Simmons off the number was called to the two fifty.
Right.
But what they're, but they're asking if it comes in higher, they don't want to be responsible as well. So we have to accommodate that.
Well.
That's what I'm saying.
We have a separate.
But that, but that gets into permit, right? I mean.
Well, no.
It's a higher because they're buying better equipment? I mean, we're.
There's, I don't, I think this was just for the the moving of the existing equipment and the pad site and the fencing.
Right.
Right.
So chances are there's going to be some additional funds involved. That, that's been there a while.
Yeah, but like Mr. Colas said, if you pick up one of the, the half-pipe and it breaks in half, what, you know, what happens?
I do believe, I do believe, and I'm looking at Mr. Arum as I say this, I do believe that at that meeting, Mr. Simmons indicated he'd had the company that did the installation inspected and confirmed it could be moved.
Okay, yeah, see, that's.
And he gave us a price, two seventy. We, we dropped it up to three sixty-five.
In case anything, yeah.
All right, Dan.
So I will amend my motion to, as follows, that this Board of Finance will approve the Board of Education Building Committee's request for a waiver of building permit fees in a total amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars due to the city in connection with the construction of the Torrington High School Middle School project.
And second.
Okay, so motion made by Ms. Pesky, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping with that.
Still have more of an agenda?
One more, and I, I'm hoping the Superintendent can help us with this next line item. This is, again, just discussion. I don't know that it even needs a motion. But I'll move it so that we can control the, the discussion. Motion to open the floor for discussion regarding insurance benefits slash budgeting for additional Board of Education employees.
So this should be an easy one.
Do I have a motion? Just so I can open the floor. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Second, and second by Mr. Bayes. All right. And I am really sorry. I don't know why these microphones. Oh, good. I was gonna say, if you can unmask and, and speak.
Yeah, yeah. This should be an easy one. We have forty-four new employees in the medical with total five sixty-four, three fifty-six. So we have two hundred thousand out of Alliance, sixty-five thousand out of Title I, a hundred thousand out of IDEA, and then out of S or two, it's two hundred thousand. So it's basically covered through entitlement grants or just the new grants that we have because of COVID.
Okay.
All right, so the, the total cost for the insurance, medical insurance, I hate to call it insurance because we're self-insured, is five sixty-four, three fifty-six? Is that what you said?
That's correct. And we can send you the, the breakdown. We'll send it to Rob and also, and Alice, if you want.
Alice has what?
She's like poised to like bolt. So, all right, so then these, these line items outside of the operating budget, the monthly payments for the insurance have been forthcoming for the past four months?
Yes.
And are they, do they reflect these, or is this an adjustment we'll make going forward?
This would need to be an adjustment.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll do the adjustment on our end also. Sometimes we don't get the grants right away, and so it takes that little bit of time. So it shows up in general budget and then it needs to be changed.
Okay, all right. So I know that this board was holding off on a decision regarding the deposit to the O-PED based on this question. So at the next board meeting, we'll get these numbers, and that will inform the board for that. Okay?
Yep.
Good. All right. That was easy. I'm gonna make your evening even easier because the next three items on this agenda, I am asking the board to table.
Second.
Oh, my goodness, okay. So I have a motion to table item seven, item eight, and item nine made by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mr. Bayes. We're open to discussion.
Why?
Why? Okay, so quickly, the Cole Memorial Park budgets don't need to be reviewed by the Board of Finance. Those are budgets that are, that follow here. Here again is those trust funds. So those fall into the City Council's purview. Items number eight and nine, these budget modifications and budget transfers really should have gone to the City Council for approval first and then come to the Board of Finance. So I would be looking to put these on the next City Council agenda, which is December sixth, and we'll bring them back to the Board of Finance on December twenty-first.
Okay, sounds good.
Oh, let's hope that there's no discussion over them, that meeting on December twenty-first is getting.
It is, and, and I don't, I'm going to, well, I can't, I'm not gonna guess. I, I, whatever the presentation is from Tyler, I think it's important for us to have that conversation with them. I'm gonna call this motion and close it out. So the motion was to table seventy and nine, made by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Bayes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. We're in item ten, discussion by business, of business by department heads. Robin.
Oh, sorry, what?
I mean, motion. Robin, what? Do I have a motion?
Uh, so moved, second.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're open. So as a department head, do you have anything you want to add this evening? Anything? We're good.
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alice. Sayonara.
Is this your last meeting with us? Well, thank you. Thank you very, no, thank you. Yes, same to you. Thank you so much, Alice.
Yeah. Gina's in the room. Do you want to add anything this evening? Any? Gina, by the way, is our New World Tyler Technologies guru. She's so in tune with that software. And having worked for the Board of Education prior to working for the City of Torrington has brought that balance of knowledge of how these function, how these two, I, I can't say two departments, how the City of Torrington and the Board of Education as a department of the city should function with communication, especially with financial software. So I'm hoping that you can also be available on the twenty-first to share any of your concerns or insight on that. Oh, Ingrid is sitting in for Carol. Anything going, anything exciting in the City Clerk's office?
Like new home?
Good news.
So on that note, I'll add that there are a considerable number of vacancies in the City of Torrington in our Street Department. Mr. Bay has started to allude to it a little bit earlier. In our Police Department, in our City Clerk's Office, in our Finance Office, in our HR Office. It is just like every time you turn on the news and you hear about this, this labor shortage, we are experiencing it here on the local level. And I do have concerns that it's going to begin to hobble our ability to be as efficient and effective in serving the public. So if any of you have some line to somebody who might be qualified to fill any of these positions, they're all posted on the website. Encourage them to apply, you know, and give, so we can give them an opportunity for an interview. Right. Item number eleven, I'll open the floor. I'll introduce a motion to consider business by the Mayor and members of the Board of Finance.
So moved, second.
I heard Mr. Anderson and Ms. Pesky, all in favor?
That was Mr. Wright.
Was that Mr. Wright? I heard Mr. Wright and.
Mr. Wright, second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, starting with Ms. Pesky.
Mayor, you just alluded to the fact of having a tough time hiring the recycling coordinator. We, that was in the July budget, you know, starting and from what I understood, we were going to be moving someone into that.
Yes.
Adding some additional hours to an employee who was already part of the, the city structure.
Yes, and the plan, because that was budgeted for the half-year, was to make that higher in January for the second half of the year. Yeah, so Mr. Drew is working on a job description and he's working on finalizing the details along those lines, as you know, and I'm anticipating your question with the Mira plant closing. That, yeah, so this is right there, right on our front burner to not only fill that position, but also to start identifying ways that we can reduce our waste, find an alternative to Mira. And there will be more to come, and they are not going to be comfortable conversations, but.
There isn't, there really isn't a market for the plastics anymore from, from everything that I read. So going back somehow to single stream work and, and getting the food waste.
Yes.
That would reduce, I, I know at my house, it's, it's the food waste.
It's heavy. It weighs a lot. And it's mostly water.
You know, and, and up until now, we were burning it. I mean, and you know, and it can be turned into something useful. So, um, any update on the peddler?
Yes, so did you drive by it today? Did you notice they painted? So the lawsuit, we are still in court. We are still engaged in the, the requests that the city petitioned the court for the appointment of a receiver. This is, as you all know, private property. It's it's protected under constitutional rights to own property. And courts are designed to protect those constitutional rights. So every time we go to the court and say, it's blighted, it's abandoned, the property unit comes forward and says it isn't abandoned. We're paying our taxes, we're insuring this. We then go back and say, you know, there's a fire hazard. It's not in compliance with fire code. They then come into compliance with the fire code. We then go back and say, yeah, you installed a fire alarm, but the building isn't watertight. Our concern is that will be shorted out. They come in and they make the building watertight. Long story short, we entered into a stipulated agreement with this property owner that we gave them a punch list of all of the things that we needed for them to remediate the blighted conditions and the code violations. And much to my surprise, my husband and I were driving, and the deadline for that, by the way, was Monday, the fifteenth. So Sunday morning, my husband and I drove downtown and along the whole, they completed the punch. And along the whole, they completed the punch list. The papers taken out of the windows of the peddler, they painted the interior of the windows so that it is more presentable from the street. They painted the plywood. The brickwork that was starting to crumble has been repaired. So we're, we're always paying, playing that, you know, we move the, you know, we move the peg, you know, another foot and then they come and they need it. So, um, and that's all being done in accordance with law. So I do have a meeting with Attorney Nelligan, who's been representing the city in the case tomorrow morning. Uh, I have requested that he arrange for another meeting between myself and the property owner to see if we can get them closer to the realization that this property really needs to be turned over to somebody else. You know, and, and for them to be more reasonable in their asking price. Uh, it's been an incredible challenge. Um, and I have not lifted my foot off the pedal on this matter. Every day we talk about it, every week we're uh, in discussion with the attorneys. Uh, our building official is there doing inspections. Our fire marshal is there doing inspections. Doing everything we can.
And the building that is next to the municipal lot of the North End has plywood on, on the windows.
Yes.
And in anticipation of Christmas Village being opened, that's one of the gateways in, they will come down, they'll see the Frosty the Snowman pointing to go down. But it's that in order to get downtown, they're gonna have to go past that building. Just get the, the plywood off.
So they recited with blight. A letter went out with a notice that they were non-compliant. They had, I think they have thirty days to remediate the blighted condition. So that letter went out, I believe, two weeks ago, Wednesday. Two weeks ago tomorrow. Yeah.
Well, hopefully they'll.
If they don't, it's a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, but that's that a month, if they have a month, that'll put it very close to the end of Christmas.
We're trying. Within the laws and within the ordinances that we have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Anderson.
Oh, good. Nothing further.
Mr. Bayes.
Nothing further this evening.
Mr. Wright. All right, and then there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Anderson, I heard Mr. Wright. All in favor? Any opposed or adjourned? Thank you all very much. I know, I know. When you say moving on, you just have to say point of order. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, right.